To announce appeal number two thousand nineteen oh forty-nine, point two associates. They've asked for an adjournment to the twenty-seventh.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 I'll move those folks over to the twenty-seventh. Also asking for an adjournment is appeal number two thousand twenty oh oh one, Aaron Rogers, North Country Road. They've also, they've asked for an adjournment to February thirteenth.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we have a reserved decision. Appeal number nineteen zero six zero, I move the appeal of two thousand nineteen dash zero six zero, Tower Development, ninety-seven Ellen Street, Riverhead. Be granted with the following conditions, it is recommended that the planning board condition its approval on the applicant's agreement to dedicate the fossil identified as S C T M number six hundred dash sixty-five dash one dash twenty-nine point six-three to the town to be merged as a contiguous town-owned land. In accordance with the application sketches with amendments thereto, if any, is filed with the building inspector. Is there a hear motion?
Second.
All right. Mr. Whitmire.
Aye.
Mr. Seabrook.
Aye.
Mr. Barnes.
Aye.
And I vote aye. Clarissa, why don't you just read?
Okay, appeal number two thousand nineteen zero five six, fifteen Bay Avenue LLC, Aqua by American Beach, fifteen Bay Avenue, Aquabock, tax map number six hundred eighty-seven one forty-six, R B forty zoning. For interpretation of chapter three oh one, section two twenty-two A, we're proposing to convert existing three hundred thirty-two point nine plus or minus square foot shed into a snack bar, which is an expansion of a pre-existing non-conforming use.
Is there anyone else to be heard on this matter? Of course, Mr. Cuddy will not be here tonight. Please, step up. You've already been sworn in, just state your name and your address.
Raymond Ryder, eleven Locust Street.
Didn't we swear you in last time?
Yeah, you did.
Did you?
Good enough?
Okay. Um, I'd like to read a letter that- Just pull the microphone up so you-
I'd like to re-
(laughing)
I'd like to read a letter-
Sure.
Uh, on behalf of the association. Uh, we respectfully submit, at the last meeting, I stated my comments by say- saying that the Aquabock Homeowners Association wants to be good neighbors with the motel owners and that we acknowledge that the motel has shaped up since they took over. At the last meeting, we heard the owner's attorney, Mr. Charles Cuddy, state that he will, at the board's suggestion, investigate if there had been any food service at the motel since its inception. For the record, I have been a homeowner for the past twenty-nine years and my wife's family have been homeowners since before the motel was built. In none of those years do we have any knowledge of any food service at the motel. Mr. Cuddy reported at that meeting the following: One, that there would be no alcohol service- services provided; Two, that the appliances for the snack bar would be limited to a microwave oven; Three, that the snack bar would be limited to hotel guests only; Four, that the owners were not entertaining the purchase of the adjacent land. At the board's suggestion, it stated that it seemed like a good idea for the homeowners and the motel owners to meet to discuss plans for the snack bar and see if we could come to a mutually acceptable and amicable agreement. I provided Mr. Cuddy with all of my personal contact information, which he was supposed to pass along to the motel owners. I waited more than a week for some communication either via email or telephone call. Unfortunately, no such contact was received. Knowing that the meeting was fast approaching, I located the owner's telephone number, Mr. Brent Pelton, and called him. He told me that he was busy but would call me back in a few hours. That was his past Tuesday. Once again, no call was received. This morning, I called him again and we finally spoke. Based on the comments stated by Mr. Cuddy at the last meeting, here is what I was told by Mr. Pelton this morning. One, he absolutely intends to serve alcoholic beverages. Two, he would be installing a Turbo Chef microwave oven and serving hot food. That the snack bar would be open to the neighborhood owners, I did not get a straight answer on whether boaters utilizing his newly-installed ten boat slips would be availing themselves of the snack bar. Four, that he believes, that he said he believes that he is the most reasonable person to acquire the adjacent land and expand the current motel's size. Five, he also stated that he is considering renovating the second floor of the motel to accommodate additional guest rooms. I asked him to explain where these additional guests would be parking their vehicles, since there is just ample parking spots to accommodate the current number of motel rooms. He said not all guests come by car. I call that a non-answer. As a side note, in the Riverhead News Review of January thirteenth, two thousand twenty- twenty twenty, Mr. Cuddy quoted, is quoted stating that no alcohol be served. But in the May eighth, two thousand nineteen article in the Norfolk, Mr. Pelton stated that he intends to serve liquor at this establishment. Who should we believe? Our neighborhood, our neighborhood is first and foremost a small enclave of approximately forty homeowners who wish to preserve the peace and harmony of our small community. It is not a stretch of the imagination that the snack bar commencing a table service to people sitting on the beach, music blaring in the background, and little cabanas sprouting up on our already crowded beach. Ours is a very small beach and we all need to be very mindful of how this little snack bar project can easily get out of control. Our streets are private and very narrow. It is difficult for two cars to pass each other without climbing onto the neighbor's property. We have children and grandchildren playing in our streets and the thought of a bar being constructed within our neighborhood is literally beyond our comprehension. It is also no leap to speculate that this application was filed with the zoning board in the dead of winter when approximately seventy percent of the homeowners are not in residence. This is an important topic for us and deserves the proper scrutiny by all impacted partner- parties. The Aquabock Homeowners Association will respectfully request that this application be tabled and not readdressed until the owners personally meet with the members of the homeowners' association and provide certain assurances, not least of which that alcohol will not be served, as well as fully explaining their intentions. Until such a meeting takes place, this application seems to us to be inappropriate for the board's consideration. Respectfully.
Yeah, please, we'll take a copy. Any questions? No, you covered all the bases.
Yeah, sure. I can make a copy if you don't have one.
Please, step up your microphone. Were you, did you speak last night?
I did not.
Well, then, you're gonna raise your right hand. You swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth to help you go.
I do.
Kinda state your name and your address.
Hi, my name is Ryan Farrell. I live at one zero one Timothy Lane in Jamestown, New York, zip code one one nine four seven. Um, I don't speak for Mr. Pelton, but I am one of his employees and it's how I've been my living the past five years now that I moved back home. Um, and I really can't speak to any of the points that were brought up before, it's not really my place, but, um, I do think it's important to note that the impression I as an employee had been given was that we would not be doing any alcohol whatsoever, that we would not become a bar, nor would we ever intend to become a bar, um, that we will be serving guests only, that we're not going to try to implement some kind of plan to bring in the public. Um, and I can definitely speak to the fact that, you know, I do kind of rely on this to make my living. Um, be it it's satisfied guests or a customer, then, you know, I need to earn my living out here too. But, um, as to the concerns that were actually very valid, given what's happened in other towns like Greenport and Manitowoc and when these big firms move in and everything goes kind of crazy, um, I think, yeah, that we definitely need to keep an eye on it. But that being said, um, I'm actually one of the people that's trying to come up with a food plan for the snack shack. And, uh, I can heartily say that in no part of our plan do we plan on having beer, wine, or alcohol for the guests, and in no part of our plan do we, uh, plan to expand to become a bar for the guests in any sense. Um, the only thing we had planned on was having a Turbo Chef microwave oven, uh, to reheat food. Um, you can make pretzels and nachos and kind of just easy snack food for the time being, so.
Okay.
Thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you for coming up. All right, so, Mr. Cuddy's in the hospital. He, uh, he is taking ill. So, we're not making any decisions, we're not doing anything about this right now. We'll reserve it for next meeting?
You know, keep the hearing open.
Yeah, we'll keep the hearing open. We're not making any decisions. You'll be able to speak your mind the next time we have, uh, this on the docket, which will be the next meeting, I guess, unless Mr. Cuddy calls and tells us.
We have somebody-
Sure. Make up. Thank you. I have a question. Are you speaking on behalf of Mr. Pelton or on your own?
On my own.
On your own. Okay, because my conversation with Mr. Pelton- I understand what you're saying, so, until we have a representative from the boss, the owner- Thank you. We're not doing anything. Okay? Okay, well, let's, uh, move this to the next meeting.
It's February thirteenth. Mr. Chairman, I respectfully move appeal number two zero one nine zero five six to February thirteenth.
Second.
Mr. Barnes.
Aye.
Mr. Whitmire.
Aye.
Mr. Seabrook.
Aye.
And I vote aye. So, we'll see those folks next meeting. Clarissa.
Appeal number two thousand nineteen zero zero five, Christopher and Kristen Donnelly, six sixty-eight Sound Shore Road, Riverhead, tax map number six hundred seven three three, R A forty zoning. For variances under relief from chapter two nineteen, section ten B, where proposed additions are within the coastal erosion, erosion, erosion hazard area, which is not permitted. Chapter three oh one, section two twenty-two E, where proposed eastern side yard setback is nine point six feet and minimum required is ten feet. Proposed attached deck setbacks are nine point one and nine point six feet and minimum required is ten feet. Proposed additions increase gross floor area within existing non-conforming side yard set setbacks, representing an increase in degree of non-conformity.
Folks here? Just stepped up your mic, we'll swear you in. We'll find out what's going on. You swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth to help you go.
I do.
Kinda state your name and your address, sir.
Richard Bosworth, four eight two two zero, Route twenty-five, South Old New York, one one nine seven one.
You have the floor.
Um, last meeting, we had spoken about the retaining wall, which was a concern. We have since had an engineered wall drawn up. Um, we have the approval of the planning board, D E C permit to build a new wall attached to the old wall. And I'm hoping that that covers everything that we were concerned about.
Did our, excuse me, did our environmental planner review that particular permit?
He did.
Is he satisfied?
Yes, he did. He, um, went before the planning board.
Okay.
And everything's right, yeah.
I have a copy here if you-
I think we have a copy right here.
Yeah, it's fine.
Okay, anyone else to be heard on this matter? Bingo. Whoa! Okay. Have you spoken before?
I have not.
Then raise your right hand. You swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth to help you go.
I do.
State your name and your address, sir.
Joseph C. Hoffman, four three one Wolfhill Road, Dix Hills, New York. Uh, I'm representing my parents, who owned the house at six seventy-two Sound Shore Road. My parents are ninety-two and eighty-seven.
Okay.
They would have to miss Jeopardy and Wheel of Fortune.
Thank God.
Um, so, uh, we were so happy with what happened in June, we, we, we were here, um, and we were so happy to see that at least one board member had also visited the property and saw what the situation was. I'd also written a letter, included some, uh, plans. Uh, I was very surprised to see that the plan that was submitted did not show the situation of the current house. Um, uh, we've been at the house since nineteen seventy-seven, uh, my wife's family's been there thirty years before that, um, and I, I was, uh, oversaw the renovation of the house in nineteen eighty-four, eighty-five. Um, and so, when we were looking at the plans, we noticed that there were certain things that we were forced to do when we renovated our home, um, and they were not included in this. Uh, and of course, as, as I stated in the original letter, um, the big issue for us is the integrity of the bluff. Uh, we have not lost any of our bluff in the thirty-something years that we've been there, um, except in the corner that we share with our neighbor to the west. Um, as they've done their work with these retaining walls, I think this is the third retaining wall, uh, that's been up there, um, we've lost some in that very, that corner over there. When we had our, when we did our house, uh, we were forced to move the house back thirteen feet off the cliff, which was exactly the, the depth of the porch that was there. Uh, all the porches and the bungalows there sit on the ground, so they're probably a foot, foot and a half below the actual house, the original house that we had there. Um, and so, we've, we've had to move that back. Uh, I looked to have a full basement and I was told I could only have a mechanical room on the south side, because again, they were worried about the integrity of the bluff. Um, based on what I saw in this plan, uh, they intend to keep the north-west corner of the house in position and pivot the house so that it's now parallel to our property line. Right now, the offsets are nine foot six to the north and, uh, nine, uh, and like fifteen feet to the south. They want to take that fifteen foot and move it closer, but when they pivot like that, they also move the northeast corner two feet closer to the bluff. Uh, so it's a pivot like this. Interestingly enough, although the, the side yard restriction on the, of the west is, is less than ours, the distance between the houses is greater than ours, probably twenty, thirty-foot distance between the two houses. Once this is moved, there will be maybe, uh, fifteen feet, uh, sorry, twenty feet between the two houses on our side, so by doing that. So, what I was asking is that we, that we simply sort of hold, uh, them to the same standard that we did, and I'm not asking them to go beyond. When I built this house, I had to keep three sides of the house. I had to actually physically move the house, keep the house, and build it around. Since then, I know that they can knock the house down and start from scratch, uh, and, and I'm fine with that, but the other things, I thought it was good engineering. Uh, at the time, I wasn't happy that I had moved my house back, but again, in all the years we've been there, we have not lost an inch on that bluff, uh, so I think it was, it was very, very sound engineering.
Sir, you're the easterly neighbor or the west-
I am, I am the, uh, easterly neighbor.
And how far, what is your setback from your house to your property line on a side yard that shares the same side yard as-
Uh, it's probably, uh, I think I have it, hold on. I, I had to go back to my, my plans. Yeah, I, I can't, I'm, I'm looking, but I can't find my plans.
Where, where maybe, maybe ten feet?
So, you're about the same as what he's proposing?
Exactly.
Yeah.
So, uh, based on my past experiences and in, under the town code, the planning board is the permit administrator, not the zoning board. They're only asking us for, I believe, side yard relief, but it's the planning board that would give the relief either going forward or away from the cliff. So, my question to you is, did you address the planning board when this came up?
Uh, no.
You, you haven't? Okay.
Well, again, the first thing I knew about this was when they-
Because they posted it?
They posted, and, uh, so we're here for the June thirteenth. Uh, we came back for that, but we haven't gone to any other meetings other than this meeting.
Okay.
I was not aware of any other meeting. Would they have notified us?
Um, I don't know if they did or would. Um, I would think they should, but I'm not sure, I'm not clear on what their procedures are, um, but they are the permit administrators for coastal zone, coastal hazardous setbacks. So, I believe our environmental planner met with the planning board according to Clarissa, our secretary, and I don't know if that was addressed or not, because I wasn't at those meetings and I don't attend those meetings, but those concerns should be addressed to them.
Well, will I have an opportunity to address it to them? Or did I miss that?
Um, well, I don't know where they are in the process. Are they in a preliminary? Are they in a final?
They're waiting on approval from this board.
And then that's it? And then the, then the town, the town planning board then can approve?
They can.
Clarissa? I'm sorry. I'm a little confused, because on the reading or on the, uh, the mention, it talks about the proposed addition being within the coastal erosion hazard, but on the proposed survey, it's not in the coastal erosion, you know, erosion's hazard area?
They have a chapter two nineteen application in for that, for, for all of the, um-
So, it's not within that area on the survey that they're proposing?
Let's see, let me look at here. Less of the northeast corner touches it.
But if you want to find people looking at the line, what have you?
Oh, sure.
In the, in the-
Yeah.
Well, this is a different plan.
What's that?
It's a different plan.
That's the staff report from the environmental planner.
Can we have another survey on that?
So, this is the existing house. So, the existing house? I, I, I have an outline of the exi- existing house if you want to see that.
Yeah, but part of that is in the coastal-
I'm just trying to understand if the existing house is within the coastal erosion hazard area and the proposed is outside?
Is a jurisdictional line.
That's what I'm trying to determine.
It looks like it is outside.
See, this looks like the proposed, the, like, existing, which is inside this area here. But the proposed, which is the survey that I showed you-
It's a jurisdiction.
Is, is, is a setback.
I think it's chapter two nine.
Yeah, so they're not in.
This was from the building department.
Do you want to come up here a minute, sir? If, like, the coastal zone management line-
Yeah.
Has, uh, a, a distance of jurisdiction.
Did you see the survey here?
Yeah, I have it.
So, that's the proposed. That's the proposed, right?
Here's the, here's the original. So, the jurisdiction issue is it's twenty-five to fifty feet of the zone.
No, no. According, according to this survey, the ten-foot wide coastal erosion hazard line-
That's the line.
So, they gotta be twenty-five feet back?
But the work is being performed within a certain distance. It's like the D E C.
Okay.
They have a hundred and fifty-foot jurisdiction. So, this, in this particular case, I believe it's twenty-five feet.
Okay, so they-
Which puts it in the planning boards under their jurisdiction to regulate that.
So, this survey should have showed the twenty-five-foot line, to make, to make it more understandable for, for a board.
Well, for you, yes, maybe.
Yeah.
But the planning board is the permit administrator, so they would have to-
Okay.
Um, be the ones that are, that are deciding on the permit.
Yeah, here's the original, that is the red, you can see that the corner is the same spot as the-
Sir, when you built your house, the C C M requirements were different back then. They've changed. And actually, they were, they were actually under the jurisdiction of the state of New York, but the state kicked it to the town. Correct. That's how the planning board-
It's just, right.
So, what's, it's got to go to the planning department and they'll-
Our legal attorney here has taken a quick look at the statu- the statute. I don't know if the, the answer is there or not. Um, it's been a while since I've visited that statute, but we'll see.
So, there's another group that would, I would have to address to speak to the-
Planning. Planning boards.
Planning boards.
Michelle, we must have talked again.
Yeah, come on up. We're checking this out. Speaking on the microphone, please.
I'm sorry? Oh, the planning board has already adopted the resolution, and all we're waiting on at this point is Z B A.
Right.
And it's not in the coastal. And the way the house is situated, it's straightened on the property, which makes, it's almost equidistant to both property lines.
Okay. Just let, don't check this out.
So, the planning board has acted on this already. It's, it's putting a resolution together?
Yeah, it's-
Can you-
I have a signed resolution out here if you'd like to see it.
We have that determination here.
It's, it, um, classip has a, the secret action board, because zoning board can't act on it unless the secret is determined. So, the planning board did that, and then they need this to move forward for approval with the planning board.
Okay.
That's clear. Even though it's confusing. It's not it. It's not. I don't think that's a legal issue. I don't think it's a legal issue.
I know both of us were in the court, yeah.
So, it's a legal issue. I'm sure it is. I'm sure it is. Sorry? Do you see this as a legal issue?
No.
The moving boards, structure may be located closer than the government. So, can we go up a little higher?
Yeah.
Does it have some limitations? I mean, they identify that as the planning board, right? I think that's what's key. Yeah, I still think there's a jurisdictional somewhere, but it's irrelevant at this point because they're, they, they fell into the jurisdiction of two nineteen, and it was reviewed by the planning board as the administrator. So, the question is, and he's asking is-
He had certain standards to follow, and then reveals these are different standards that were followed, and in part of that, the building inspector should be able to answer that question for you, um, as to what conditions were met when you did your permit as opposed to today. Like I said, it was, came back down to the town, the state took it away, the state gave it to us as our problem, so, um, and yet they oversee the decisions we make and they can actually be critical of some of the decisions that the town does make, but I'm not sure if we have the answer you're seeking. I think the planning board has the answer you're seeking. So, I don't mean to throw you back to the planning board, but, um-
That's where you go.
But if you, if you are concerned about what's going on here and you want to address the planning board, you're certainly welcome to do so. And, um, I would suggest that we, you know, consider a reserved decision going until we know the answer has been met for the neighboring property.
Thirteen.
That's just my opinion. I mean, have they done everything they're supposed to do? In my eyes, they have, but when you have a property owner that's adjacent and doesn't fully get to vet the permit, then maybe we have to afford that opportunity to the neighbor. I know that these people have been patient, the owners, and they'd like to build it, but if there's questions to be answered, I can understand that too.
This is the staff report.
Uh-huh.
From the planning staff.
And I'm quite sure, I'm not sure if the neighbor has a copy of the staff's report. Did, did you ever seek out a copy of the planning board's staff report? Did you ever seek out a copy of the planning board's staff report?
Didn't even know. This is the only thing that we've been involved with.
So...
We weren't notified of any other...
We'll, we'll make a copy of it for you. Um, I don't know when the planning board will act on this, but it should be soon, I would think.
We're on the calendar for next week.
For next week?
Yeah.
Okay. So, just give us a minute.
Okay.
So, may I speak to that other gentleman, please? May I address him? The current, the major concern you have is that you feel that the house is getting shifted and closer to the bluff.
It, it, it's getting two feet closer to the bluff.
Then...
And it's also coming within nine foot. It's also come, it's again, it's...
But basically, they're asking for the same side yards that you have and you feel it's getting shifted to the, closer to the bluff. However, they've had engineered, engineering people design a new bulkhead and hopefully that should not affect the bulkhead and the bluff. So, you know, we're talking two feet, that's two feet.
Right.
Is that gonna make a significant change? And did the engineers feel comfortable enough how it was put in place and how it was designed? We want you to have that comfort too, of course.
Well, so the comfort is that their, their bulkhead ends at our property line and the water has always run down the side of that retaining wall, causing damage to our bluff.
So, is that, that bulkhead has to be reconstructed, correct?
Yes.
But I, again, I don't see how it would serve me.
Well, no, I'm asking them now. So, if that's the case, then is there a possibility that we can ask their engineers to provide some kind of a design so that water doesn't run onto your property or onto your bluff side? Is there some kind of a retaining containment area for that? Let me ask the contractor, please. So, did, does your engineer feel comfortable enough that there will be no water runoff onto the bluff and onto your neighbor's property the way this is being designed?
He does. As I said, the existing wall, although it is, it is not built correctly and it was not permitted.
Correct.
The new wall, vinyl sheathing, piles, uh, dead men going back, and it's being attached to the wall that's in place right now.
To who's wall, of course?
To the existing wall that was built without a permit.
So, it's in addition to the wood CCA one that you did?
Correct.
And it's gonna be on the outside of that?
It's gonna be landward.
It's landward. However, how about eastward? Does it just end out in the middle of space? Will it connect to an existing bulkhead that exists on their property?
They don't have...
You have no bulkhead.
They don't even have, they don't have, no. That's just bluff.
Okay, so is it a possibility that you could put a return on that bulkhead?
Yes, yes.
Maybe like five feet?
The return, if you show it?
I haven't looked at the plan.
Oh.
So, I, I would, I'm asking you.
May I show it to you?
Yes, you may. I have not seen that plan, so, but I haven't sorted it out either. Because I rely on the environmental... Take a look at that, go ahead.
So, this is the new wall.
Okay.
And more returned to... And we also have the DEC permit that you would ask for last night.
So, I think what he's obviously concerned about is this area. This area where water will run this way and it may erode the bluff. That's what he's concerned about. That's, that's what he's saying. So, so when you grade the property and you put this bulkhead in, how high will the bulkhead be as opposed to the actual elevation itself?
Top of bluff elevation? It's at the same elevation?
How high will this be? If I, if I walk out the new house?
Right.
How high will this be off the ground?
Uh, approximately a foot.
A foot?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So, we suspect that water and runoff will, you're gonna put drains in and you're gonna run gutter guards in?
Yeah, there's gonna be dry wells in.
So, you're gonna put dry wells in?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Okay.
Dry wells.
And will this side be ceded?
Yes.
So, to, to address your concerns, I think if, if we looked at this and said, you know, one of the conditions would be that they have to maintain their own water runoff, even though that's in the town code already, okay? We could still condition it and refer to the section of the code that when they build this house, that that drainage is sufficient enough and installed properly to guarantee you that you have no water runoff onto your property or onto the bluff. Would that satisfy you?
What is the guarantee that they... So, if, so let's say there is runoff, there is damage to my bluff. What's my recourse?
Well, it's one of our conditions of the variance.
So, I'm, I'm not, I'm in the town of, I'm, I'm in the town of Huntington. They did the same thing with my neighbor. I went through two pool liners because of the runoff from the property that contains its own. And, and the town...
Please come up to the mic. I'm sorry.
So, my, my, so my concern is, so we have a bluff that is, that is, that is, uh, has not been moved since the hurricane of nineteen thirty-eight. All right, so it's, it's a solid bluff. No bulkhead on the top. We have a bulkhead at the, at the base of, of the cliff, but not on the top. The only loss we've had is in the corner where they keep putting in these bulkheads.
So, the question I have for you?
Okay.
When they put the first bulkhead in without the permit, did it create any erosion or water runoff to you?
It did.
It did?
Right.
However, this is gonna be a new construction site and when it's built again or rebuilt, do you believe that that will happen again?
I, I do.
Okay, so what, what, what can we do to prevent that?
I, I, I don't know. I mean, so it looks like I'm being forced to put my own bulkhead up to...
Well, we're not forcing you to do anything. I just want you to have a comfort level.
Yeah. Well, I don't have a comfort level because again, this, 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 this is the third bulkhead that we've had. In fact, one of them, they did have the runoff, they had the runoff going, they had a sneaky peat that went down our bluff.
Do you have, did you have an engineer look at the bluff that they built the bulkhead on? Do you have an engineer that has looked at these plans?
No.
So, this is all based on your just past experiences?
Thirty, nineteen seventy-seven.
All right.
Until now.
That's fair. So, at this point, the only thing I can suggest is that we would hold a reserve decision until you address the planning board with this. Because they have an engineer on staff for that, for that, for that issue. That's all I can suggest at this point.
But do, but I do get, I, I don't know how I missed an, an opportunity in the past.
Well, I can't help you with that.
Yeah.
However, you knew that this case was adjourned? And I don't know if you pursued to get notification?
I, 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 I have been in contact with Ms. Collins since June.
Good.
Uh, regularly asking her for updates.
Okay.
Uh, Ms. DeFlood also contacted me, but only about this, only about the zoning board.
So, it, it's a, it's a multifaceted permit application, okay? They started doing work without a permit. They rectified what they needed to rectify. They're here for a variance for a side yard. Whether the house is pushed two feet back, two feet forward, I don't think that's gonna change anything. What you're concerned about is water runoff onto your property and onto the bluff. And that's, we have to figure out a way that that's gonna be guaranteed, that that won't happen on your property. So, the only thing I could suggest at this point is we would do a reserve decision, which would be based on pending the planning board's determination as to how they want to handle that water runoff. Now, they have an engineer, and I think it's Vinnie Gordiello. He will take a look at your concerns if you appear at that meeting next week. And he can address it to you there. He can go to the site or he can come up with a solution or you can have an engineer take a look at these plans and determine whether or not that's what you want and how you want to pursue it. But in all, all fairness to them, they've been very patient through the process. So, and you not knowing about the planning board as the permit agency, you need to address it next week and come to that meeting and explain yourself to those members so they know what's going on.
But in the meantime, we will give Vinnie Gordiello the heads up and let him get that done. So, you, he's not, you're just not going to the meeting and expressing all you did here tonight. And you gotta, you gotta wait for another meeting or two. We'll get him, we'll get him on the ball right away and, and try and get that done for you.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Yes, you may, but you have to go back to the mic. You can take that.
Clarissa? If you can get ahold of Vinnie and tell him what the situation is and that these folks are gonna be here at the, uh, the next planning board meeting and if he could have some answers for him.
Thanks. Now, I just really, would've broke my train of thought if I hadn't read it. I would've been, eh. So...
Okay.
Go ahead. Please.
The town engineer has already reviewed this, otherwise we would never, we wouldn't, we wouldn't be able to be here right now.
He reviewed it and did he say that there'll be no water runoff to the adjoining property?
Did the town?
Is that in writing?
The town engineer?
Yeah, I'm reading it right here.
The town's, uh, employed engineer.
Right.
Go ahead.
He approved the, he approved the plan.
Okay, was it addressed that there, there could be an issue on the east side of the property? Did he address it?
Not at all.
He didn't see it?
And they just basically, you know, we have to do the runoff and we have to do the dry wells and the gutters and the leaders and the piping to the dry wells.
So, all those conditions are in Vinnie's letter? I haven't read anything.
I don't...
Has the engineer, has the engineer been saying that?
That's the, that's the staff report and he included the comment from the people who...
Okay, so here's what I'm gonna suggest, that if we can provide a copy to the adjoining owner and give a copy of the staff report, that is public information, correct?
Yeah, he gave, I, he gave a copy.
To who?
To the, to the neighbor.
To the neighbor. So, you got it? Okay, so, if you feel there's anything you object to in that, then I would appear at the planning board meeting next week. If you don't agree with his assumptions and his designs.
But if he doesn't address the east property at all...
We will tell him exactly what your, what your concern is, so that he will address that.
You should appear at that meeting and tell him your concerns. Tell him, you know, what guarantee do I have that these water runoffs will be dealt with? Now, I, what they're doing is probably the right things, is putting the dry wells in, piping them into the dry wells. So, there is no water runoff onto the side of the bluff. But you need to go and show your concerns. Okay. Planning board meeting's February sixth and it's at three o'clock?
Seven.
It's a seven o'clock meeting.
February sixth?
Correct.
Okay.
Same place?
I believe it's here. So, um, I, I think, I'm not sure if we have enough to say we're gonna do a reserve decision. We, we have to probably wait until they have that meeting. Would you think that's the correct way? Adjourn it to the February?
Yeah, so leave it open.
Thirteenth?
Okay.
So, six, so it'll be another week after that meeting and then we...
So, a definite decision on the thirteenth. It's the best we can do. Keep everybody happy. Or not happy. Okay, let's move this along to the thirteenth.
We have to try to do the right thing because these can be problems after the...
May I just ask?
Yes, you may.
We're asking for a var, for side yard variances. Okay, what he's asking for has to do with the planning board.
That's where we're steering him to, yes.
Okay.
But you're asking us to make a decision tonight, not knowing where the drainage issues are being addressed or not for him and the neighbors.
Okay, but at the last meeting and this time it was the location of the house. The last meeting, all that was asked for was a DEC permit or an engineered wall.
When you appeared here.
When we appeared here. And we've addressed that. It's gone through secret, it's gone through planning, it's gone through environmental. Why are we getting put, it's three hundred and seventy days today from when we applied for this.
I fully understand your frustration.
Well, it's, you know, this, this could've been brought up a long time ago. You know, we've been through this process, jumping through hoops. We've been through two, two engineers. And the town engineer has, or whoever you use, has also approved it. And I'm just a little confused as to what that has to do with what we're asking for. We're not asking for anything but the side yard variances, correct?
In general, want due process. So, part of the due process sometimes takes time. And the neighbors have a right to be concerned about the drainage issue.
Right.
And I used to be the chief building inspector in this town. And I've dealt with many drainage issues because people would make promises and then they don't do it. And the only thing I could hold over their head was the CO, the certificate of occupancy. So, they fixed that drainage issue. So, in this case, I want the planning board to make sure that they're aware that if they approve this in this coastal zone management area, that if they approve this, there could be a drainage issue. I want it addressed and he has to have the opportunity to address it. That's all I'm saying.
Okay.
That's where I am.
Leroy?
Yes, sir.
You mentioned that the drainage is part of our co, town code?
Yes, it is part of our code.
So, why wouldn't they fall back on that if they didn't follow through? What do we guarantee?
His concern was, what are you gonna guarantee me?
We've never considered draining, uh, drainage as an issue.
To me, it's part of it.
We've never considered drainage as an issue with anything.
I, I said, let's, hey, look, there's a question?
It's part of it. It's part of the process. It really is. And you have to let that be fact.
Next meeting decision be that. That's all we do.
Yeah. Okay, sorry for the wait, sorry for the delay. He's probably here, you know, I'm sorry, but, you know, people have, go ahead, please. I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
No, no, no.
You have another speaker that you may have to swear at.
Oh.
I mean in.
You swear to tell truth, nothing but the truth, and I'll be good.
I do.
State your name and your address.
Chris Donnelly, six, six, eight Sancho Road, I'm the owner.
Oh, you're the owner?
Yeah.
He's a suffering person here.
Yeah, thank you. So, um, listen, I, I appreciate you guys considering this. I know that last June, we initially, you know, I wasn't here, unfortunately, couldn't make it, but, um, Rich had spoken on, on my behalf about the application. You know, at that time, my neighbor, I think, submitted a ten or fifteen-page report about his concerns. You know, this is seven months ago. And, um, I don't know if this is a new issue that he's, he's looking to bring up today, but he had a fifteen-page report about drain, uh, I don't know if drain was mentioned or not, but that would've been seven months ago. So, I don't know why this is now coming up, um, because nothing has changed. The conditions of the property are exactly the same. I've now incurred many thousands of dollars of expenses on engineering for this, uh, wall. And the actual existing wall has three separate drain points and there has never been a drain issue that I have ever seen. So, my perspective, this is very anecdotal. I haven't seen any evidence. If he's got some evidence about photographs of drainage problems, I would love to see them because I personally don't believe they exist. But, you know, to me, this was a setback concern. He wrote all about setbacks. I'm actually trying to accommodate both neighbors. I'm actually much closer to my western neighbor currently. So, I'm trying to center the house on the property line, so I'm equidistant on each side. And his property, his house is actually closer to the, to the adjacent property line than, than mine's proposing to be. So, I'm trying to do everything to make everybody happy here. I realize...
That's what we're trying to do.
I know. Unfortunately, I'm the one who's, um...
You have a tremendous investment. I understand that.
Yeah, I mean, I...
However?
Yeah.
I've done construction in the past, you know, I built. I made sure I talked to all the neighbors, worked things out with them, have conversations.
Yeah, but this is the first one hearing of this.
Well, I can't help that. I don't know what happened before that, okay?
Yeah, I mean, I'd encourage anyone to go out and look at, at this location.
The neighbor sees that there was a wall bill.
Yeah.
And he's seeing runoff onto his property and to the bluff.
But that doesn't exist. There's, I have drains.
It hasn't happened.
I have drains in place today that literally penetrate underneath...
So, it's never happened to him?
There's, I don't believe there's runoff on his property. If he's got photographs of such thing, I'd love to see it. I don't, I don't believe that exists.
Here's what I say, you save it for the planning board.
Yeah, no problem.
That's where it's going.
Um, and then we'll come back here.
I'm sorry about that. And then you can, we'll give you a decision six days later.
All right. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay.
Well, we'll talk about it afterwards.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I move that appeal number nineteen dash zero, zero, five. Christopher and Kristen Donnelly be adjourned to February thirteenth.
Second.
Mr. Bonds?
Aye.
And Mr. Widmire?
Aye.
Mr. Seabrook?
Aye.
And I, bud.
Is anybody here for that, um...
We'll find out in a minute.
Hocul number two thousand nineteen zero five five, Eden Walter Reyes, five fourteen St. John's Place Riverhead, tax map number six hundred one twenty-six four thirty-eight. RA forty zoning for a use variance and end or relieve from chapter three oh one, section eight. We're seeking to reestablish two-family use and one-family dwelling is permitted.
Mr. Reyes? Mr. Reyes? Mr. Reyes? Mr. Reyes?
Uh, just see if there's anybody here for the, for the application.
Is there anyone here for this appeal?
No.
Out of the cold.
Has anybody called you on this, Clarissa?
No.
You haven't heard from anybody?
So are you here for any of the appeals?
I'm here for, I think, ZB, ZB A work.
Yeah, this is it.
Yeah, I'm on ten twenty East Main Street. We have an application for a signage on front of, um, the building.
Oh, wait a minute now.
Oh, that's on it.
I don't think that's on for tonight. Did you post it?
Uh, we submitted it in last Wednesday, application.
I don't, no, there's nothing scheduled for the meeting tonight.
Not this meeting? You gotta know, you gotta notice that with.
Well, tech on weed out signs, put everything in.
Oh, okay.
With the building department?
Yes.
So it was a sign application with the building department?
Yes.
Okay. It might have been for architectural review board? What is the, is it Isabelle Restaurant?
Yes.
Okay. That was last night, four o'clock. That was for a sign. If you wanna wait until after the meeting, I can tell you with the ARB.
And the meeting, the meeting's just about over, so. All right. Anyone here for this one?
Currently not.
All right, let's move it off to the next meeting. Who's got it?
All right. Mr. Chairman, I respectfully move that we adjourn appeal number two zero one nine zero five five to February thirteenth, two thousand and twenty.
Second.
Mr. Barnes?
Aye.
Mr. Whitmire?
Aye.
Mr. Seabrook?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Do we hear motion to accept the minutes from the last meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do we hear motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much, everyone.
Have a good night.